All right, I want to welcome everybody to the first school board meeting of the new year. It is January 12th, 2015. I want to thank everybody for coming. It's really happy to be here, all back and safe, and the weather should be warming up. That's what they are predicting. We are going to have a spotlight later in the meeting as soon as everybody that we're waiting for arrives, so please don't leave. And in the meantime, we are going to call the meeting to order. Actually, we may just move right into the spotlight. We're going to move into our spotlight because everybody we're waiting for has arrived. I want to welcome everybody. Our first spotlight that we're thrilled to be doing is to honor and spotlight our TIES Teachers of the Year this year. And the first teacher that we're going to talk about, well, so we'll let Clarence get settled a little bit, is our wonderful Elizabeth Husing.
Yes.
And Rob, are you able to -- she's not able to be here tonight, but we do want to talk about her because she was one of the two, and it will keep you in suspense on the second winner of the award.
Yes, Elizabeth Husing is not here tonight, but I am proud to take a few minutes to talk about Elizabeth. She is very shy. She does not like getting attention for being recognized. When I stopped at her class to tell her about this, she was trying to keep it a secret from her students. [laughter] Because she was -- she's so humble, but she's a fantastic teacher, and we're proud to recognize her as one of our TIES Teachers of the Year. Elizabeth is a high school math teacher, and she has brought TI Inspire calculators to the high school math department. And as she described it to me, she wrote a grant on her own to get the first couple of sets for teachers, teacher sets, of the new TI Inspire calculators. Then, the high school math department liked them so much that they used their own funds to purchase them, the department funds. And Elizabeth has been the trainer of the teachers here at the high school. She said that these new calculators are so awesome because she, as a teacher in the front of the room and moving around the room, can see what's happening on each of the calculators that her students have in their hands. They can present from their chair, a student can present their work from their calculator to the class on the screen. Elizabeth can see all of their work, and they can communicate back and forth with the calculators, too. So she can send them a problem to their calculator, they solve it, and it's graphed on the screen in front of the class so we can see quickly how many of the students did well and how they didn't do well. So the combination of the calculator power and the communication power of these devices is pretty inspiring. And Elizabeth is being recognized because she, on her own, worked hard to get these calculators, to convince her department to buy them, and to train everybody in her department. So she is well-deserving of this award. She's also an early adopter of Schoology, and I know she has created an entire class on Schoology for a group of seniors that she's working with. So proud to recognize Elizabeth Husing from the high school.
Well done, Elizabeth. And the second TIES Teacher of the Year that we're honoring is Katie Swanson from Aquila. And I would invite both the principal of Aquila, Clarence Pollak, and Katie to step up to the podium and make sure Katie's standing close enough to you, Clarence, so she's in the camera angle. Because the people at home, I really think we honor not only Katie and Elizabeth, but they represented all of the great teachers we have in St. Louis Park. And so we're really happy to have you both here.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to share a few words about Kate Swanson. I am very lucky as a principal at Aquila to work with such outstanding teachers and throughout all of our schools in St. Louis Park, but Kate Swanson is one of those that is definitely an exceptional teacher. She is went above and beyond in regards to so many things regarding technology, and I just wanted to highlight a few things. Kate Swanson is a dynamic educator who uses technology whenever possible with her second-grade students. I have personally observed her lessons come alive with the use of different types of technology. For example, she uses her Smartboard multiple times a day across all curriculum areas. During a math lesson, students were given a chance to manipulate numbers and objects within the Smartboard technology. A student whispered to me, "I get it now, Mr. Pollak," and that is so exciting when I go into these teachers' classrooms. Kate also uses the Chromebooks and iPads in a variety of capacities. Students are expanding their research skills with Chromebooks, and those students needing additional intervention time with literacy and math concepts using the multiple iPad apps. If there is an opportunity to use technology with her students, Kate will take it. I asked her, which I think is great, I asked her, "What do you think of technology?" as I submitted this application. When I asked Kate why she enjoys technology in her classroom, she shared these words with me. "My second-grade students were born the same year Apple introduced the first-generation iPhone." This exposure to new sources of information has impacted how their learning techniques develop. They adapt well to rapidly evolving new technologies and expect speed and efficiency. These kids know tech, love tech, and thrive in the classroom when given the opportunity to use it. So I would definitely like to congratulate Kate Swanson on going above and beyond for our students at Aquila and throughout the district.
Thank you.
[applause]
It's your chance.
I'm fine. I'm on camera, and that's okay. I just want to say, I don't know who pushed for the technology grant or money or fundage. Since I was teaching in St. Louis Park, we had all of this great technology, but I'd bring it to the classroom and try to log on, and uh, we had no Wi-Fi. So until we had that Wi-Fi update, it was really frustrating because I had, I wanted to use it so frequently, and every time I tried, I failed. And this year, I have said it multiple times, it is so refreshing. We bring all this awesome technology that the district has funded, and it's working, and the kids are loving it, and I'm loving it just as much. So, thank you.
We want to thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's always exciting to hear stories about things that are working, as we sort of intend, with great teacher input. So thank you very, very much. We always say, "You're welcome to stay, but you're not obligated to," because we know you have a busy day tomorrow. So, thank you. First up, this is the first meeting of the St. Louis Park School Board in the year 2015, and it is our organizational meeting. So a good part of our agenda is going to be, part of our agenda, is going to be done doing organizational things. And the first item up on the agenda is election of school board officers. The officers serve typically essentially a one-year term. And so I'm first looking for nominations for board chair.
I'd like to nominate Julie Schweitzer for board chair for this next year.
So Julie Schweitzer's been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Under the Roberts Rules of Order, we call for nominees three times. So are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries seven oh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and we want to thank Nancy for chairing the board for the last year. One of the things she's done has been more behind the scenes, too, and just trying to get our organization in order, is what we are considering and creating a chart so we can pass on to future chairs, looking down the row in both directions over the years. And so I've appreciated that she kept us on time, on focus, and included all the opinions that needed to be included, whether they were community or board members. So I've appreciated you as chair for the last year.
Thank you.
And our next item is the election of the vice chair. So are there any nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Joe Totalevich for vice chair for this year.
Is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
And twice more, since I think that counts as one. Are there any other nominations? Are there any more nominations? Any discussion? And all in favor of the motion nominating Joe Totalevich as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried, seven zero. Welcome, Joe. You're next in line. Next election is for school board clerk. Are there any nominations for school board clerk? I think sometimes we refer to that as secretary. Ken?
I'd like to nominate Karen Waters for school board clerk.
And a second for that nomination?
Second.
Second by Jim. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to nominate Karen Waters as clerk, please say, for Karen Waters as clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven zero. Congratulations, Karen. Our last officer is treasurer, so are there any nominations for school board treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Jim Yarosh as a treasurer.
Is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations? Any discussion? And all in favor of the nomination of Jim Yarosh as treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So Jim, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ken, for serving as treasurer over the last year. And Joe was our clerk or secretary, and so he's moving, thank you for doing that. And now you don't need to take minutes anymore. So.
Never take.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. And board members, we had the meeting dates under discussion, F under number six, discussion items. But in, due to an exchange of emails, it's not included also under the action items, so we want to add that, I guess, as item F, under the action item, to approve our meeting dates. So I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as, with the addition of approving the meeting dates as item 7F.
So moved.
Motion by Nancy. Any second for the approval of the agenda?
Second.
Jim? Is that, okay, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? And then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We have our agenda for the evening. Paper, too many fingers required to move, too many microphones and papers. So the organization of the board, I guess we would consider a discussion item at this point because we have it under the action items. I will, I should have read through the entire agenda, and actually, I will do that now. I should have done that before we voted on it. But the first item is the organization of the board. These are things that we need to adopt each year, and there's usually very little change. But I'll read through them so that the audience knows what they are. It's approving the official newspaper of the school district. And in this case, that's Sun Sailor. Approving our depositories for legal purposes, so that's where we have our accounts. It's a number of banks, local and national. Authority for electronic fund transfers, authority to make investments, authority to disburse salaries, authority for early claim payments, purchasing authority, a deputy clerk and deputy treasurer, who's our director of business services, check signatories, appointment of the school attorneys, school auditors, and appointing the responsible authority for data privacy. So that's what's in the organization of the board. I'll go through the rest of the agenda just for information at this point. But the discussion items are the Children First update, American Indian Committee resolution, district construction update, Lenox Bit Award, Parks and Recreation Commission reappointment, meeting dates for the school board, and then school board compensation. And then the action agenda is pretty much the same. It's the organization of the board items that I just went through, approval of the Park and Recreation Commission reappointment, approval of the American Indian Committee resolution, approval of a Lenox Committee Center Bit Award, and then approval of the school board compensation, and we've added the meeting dates as F, communications and transmittals followed by adjournment. So I'll go back to the organization of the board. Any discussion on that from board members? We'll have time to look at meeting dates as a separate item. Okay, then we will turn to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have three items to report on tonight. The first is, we had our first cold day of the year. In this case, we did have school last Wednesday on the very, very cold day, and I thought I would take a moment just to explain the process that I use when determining whether to have school or not. And again, we did have school on our first cold day last week. First of all, it's important to know that we don't have a school board policy on school closing due to cold, and I think that's good because it gives us some flexibility in the decisions that we make. I do use, in my decision-making process, a range, however, which is 20 degrees below temperature or 40 degrees below wind chill. So those are the two magic marks that I'm looking for. We, in the case of cold, we're always going to try to make the decision the night before, and I'm using 8:00 PM as my guide to be sure to let parents know by 8:00 PM the night before if we're planning to close school because of cold. We had this experience last year, and the feedback we got from parents was very good, that if we are going to do it, they want to know ahead of time so they can make plans. We get our forecasts directly from the National Weather Service, which is great. So we don't rely on the television news or the radio news forecasters. We get a specific forecast for St. Louis Park right from the National Weather Service. They send it to my phone, and that's very helpful because I can look at that the night before and see that, in this case, this last example, I could see that the wind chill was predicted to be at 35 below, and the temperature at about 13 below the following morning. And that was within the range of having school. The other thing that it's important for people to know is that the local superintendents are all talking. We're all connected on an email link, and we are talking through the morning, and through the afternoon, and through the evening, and we're comparing decisions that we are all making. This year, it's a little different because some districts do have policies, and when, if their policy said 35 below wind chill, and the forecast said 35 below wind chill, they had to close school. And we had some more flexibility than that. And then finally, the buses make a big difference in any decision. I was always talking with the bus company, and the first question is, will the buses start? And the second question is, will the drivers get there? And the buses start is affected by cold, not wind chill. So it doesn't really matter what the wind chill is for a bus, but the temperature matters. And the people at the bus company are out there all night, starting the buses and making sure they start. Whether the drivers can start their cars and get to the buses is a bigger issue. And last year, one of the days we had to cancel school, that was the reason, because we literally did not have enough drivers. So for the community to know, if there's a decision to be made about temperature, it's going to be made the night before. And if we do make an early morning decision, which we really, really don't want to do, but if we do, it's more than likely due to buses, either not starting or drivers not getting there. We did miss quite a few students last Wednesday. About 20% of our students did not attend school. They were excused. We didn't count them as unexcused. On a typical day, 5 to 8%, I think, is normal. So if you had a class of 25 students on a typical day, you might be missing one or two students. And I think last Wednesday, a good example would be a class of 25. There were probably about 17 there instead of 23. So that's a little recap of the cold, the cold day last week. I also wanted to mention our upcoming strategic plan, which I'm very excited about. It's just about to kick off. The first big event that the public will see, there haven't been any promotions yet, but there soon will be, is on February 24th, we're going to have a World Cafe, which is an event where all community members can come and give their input on the next five years of the St. Louis Park School District. There will likely be an early morning cafe, a midday cafe, and an evening cafe, where, again, community members can come and give their guidance on what we should be looking at accomplishing over the next five years. Eventually, we'll put a core team together, a team of about 30 individuals, about half from inside the district and half from outside the district. And the job of the core team is going to be to identify three to five key things, which we call strategies, that we want to accomplish in the next five years. Once those key strategies are identified, there'll be an action team that will be compiled for each strategy, and those will be the folks that will really flesh out the strategy and create the building blocks that need to happen for those strategies to be successful. We're hoping to accomplish all of this and be back in front of the board presenting the completed product by the last meeting in June. It's going to be a little ambitious, but I think we can do it. So before we head off for the summer, the strategic planning team should be here presenting the final product. So I'm really excited about that. And then the third thing I wanted to mention, as I wanted to say a special thank you to Nancy as well. She was very helpful to me as board chair, guiding me through the last 12 months, and many conversations, and lots of good suggestions and advice and counsel. So thank you, Nancy, for everything you've done for me and for the people of St. Louis Park.
Thank you. All important issues there. So we'll move on to the remainder of the agenda. And the first discussion item is the Children First Annual Update from Karen Atkinson.
Good evening, board members and Mr. Metz. Thanks for having me. I love getting in front of you once a year to let you know what's been going on with Children First in the community. So I'm using this PowerPoint. Is the lighting okay? Is that how it should be? Okay, great. So just a little background, I know you all are quite familiar with Children First, but in case some people watching are not, Children First has been in this community since 1993, long, long time that this whole community has made a commitment to our young people. And I work for Children First, and I report to a board. The chair of our board right now is Monica Murphy, and she's a vice president at Japs Olsen, which is a printing company, a very large printing company located here in St. Louis Park. And I've listed on my PowerPoint slide the members of our executive committee. Rob is a part of it, Tom Harmonin, the city manager, the police chief. We have people from private schools, people from business, Park Nicollet's represented. It really is a place where the community, the whole community comes together around our kids. And it's really a focus on all of our kids collectively, our kids. Anyone birthed to 18 who lives or goes to school in St. Louis Park is who we're targeting. The Children First, really, the name is a bit confusing because Children First really is about adults, and how we adults react to and respond to and help raise our young people. It's really about experiences, expectations, and relationships. And it's based on 40 assets out of Search Institute, 40 Things, kind of character-building traits that kids need to grow up healthy and happy. We have 250 people that we call asset champions. They've been trained voluntarily. They're from all over the community, all types of organizations, and their role really is to bring this alive in the community. The Children First Executive Committee has spent a good year planning and thinking about, what should our strategy be in the community? And really, they came back around to, we need to be all in on our asset champions. So people go through two and a half hours of training. Some people get it and are off and running, but I know some people go through the training, they're really excited, and then they're not exactly sure what they're supposed to be doing. So this year, we're going to help them figure out what we should do, and we are launching a Super Champions pilot. And really, the idea is that we're going to deepen the efforts of asset champions. We'll be working with six people who are su, whoops, why are we doing it first? Sorry, I skipped a slide. We're doing it to better equip them so that they have an understanding about Children First and the 40 assets and why they're important. We want to connect them with each other, and we want to inspire them to act on their asset-building ideas and impulses. So really, that will be kind of the focus of these small groups. That'll be headed by six super champions. One of them is in the room tonight, Frida Bailey's a super champion, can't you tell? She didn't wear a cape tonight, but she'll have one soon. Yeah, you do kind of have a cape on. So Frida works for the school district. Andrea Bozravra is a parent and a business owner in St. Louis Park. Paula Engelking is a parent in our community. Lambert Lum works for Citizens Independent Bank. He grew up in St. Louis Park and just sent his first child to kindergarten at Susan Lindgren this year. Gay Rosenthal is a psychologist. She used to work at the Jewish Day School, but now she's in private practice. And Tim Titus, if you are a Starbucks fan, he is our favorite barista at Excelsior and Grand. So as you can see, it's a great group, and it's a diverse group of people. And their job really will be to facilitate these groups, these teams, and they'll have approximately eight people on their team. And their job is really to bring out the wisdom. So the super champions will be bringing out the wisdom and the asset champions that are part of these groups. They'll be meeting between February and May. They'll have six meetings. Four of them will be face-to-face, but two of them will be online. We're going to try doing some online technology. Most of the asset champion, these super champion groups, will be multi-sector groups, but one of them, Frida's group, is going to be based specifically on the school district. So everybody in her group will be employed by St. Louis Park Schools, and the idea is that we want to vertically tie the district together from early childhood through our seniors and all of our buildings, and think about what does it mean to be an asset-building school district. So how do we tie into systems and opportunities that we already have? So one of my examples of that is, every year at kindergarten roundup time, I hear from the elementary secretaries who say, "We need to get the asset information out to our newest families. Can we get brochures?" I know there are countless opportunities where very easily we should be raising the profile of this commitment we've made among families and staff. But also, we want to make sure that we're supporting the district's mission and looking at closing the achievement gap, which will, I think, fit so nicely into asset building and relationship building. And of course, it's really about our kids. That's why we're doing this. So that, I'm really excited about it. We're going to have our kickoff training for the super champions on February 2nd, and then our groups will start meeting, and the goal is to have them done by the middle of May. So we'll, this group, you know, is our guinea pig group, so they'll be giving us feedback and helping us figure out if this is a good strategy going forward. So that's kind of the big new thing. And then things that you're used to, we have our champions breakfast. It's going to be Thursday, March 5th at the Doubletree, 7:00 AM, but we're done by 8:15, so it's free to attend that. And that really is, you know, last year, we had 300 people attend. It's really a wonderful community-building event, and it's also an event, it's Children First major fundraiser, that breakfast is. And then last, our most long-term event, we're going to have our 22nd Annual Children First Ice Cream Social. Really, it will be warm in May, Sunday, May 17th, at Wolf Park. And as you know, we give away free Sebastian Joe's ice cream, free kosher ice cream. We have entertainment. A lot of community groups have exhibits. It's just a really It's just a really great, fun day in the community. So thousands of people, if it's sunny out, we have thousands of people, so. So that's all I have for you. I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Great, board members, do you have any questions? I've got one, are you connected with the Search Institute's new thing, the perseverance process? Have you been tracking that at all?
I've been tracking it. I think we have to determine what's going to be our focus. And if we start spinning off into other areas, we might lose people. So we're, we, the executive committee really talked about you, you know, doing this pilot as our focus.
Oh, I think, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm in touch with Search, so, yeah.
Ken, were you starting to lean for questions?
Um, when, I didn't write it down, but when was the pilot going to kick off?
We're going to kick off in February. So, well, I should say, so on February second, the Super Champions are getting trade, trained. But then, um, each of them is going to pick their meeting time. They'll all be meeting different times, different locations. So if you're interested in being one of the Asset Champions that, that's on a team, let me know. And I'll make sure that you get information about, um, getting hooked into one of the teams. And if you want a scoop on May seventeenth, we, you guys are experts at that.
Yeah, most of us.
Scooping ice cream. Great.
Any other questions? Joe?
Uh, I also noticed that you have a speed networking event. I have not gone to any of these, could you explain what that's all about?
Yeah, so speed networking, I am told is like speed dating. Speed dating was developed after I was married, so I never participated in it. But what we do is people sit across the table from each other. Joe, you have three minutes to tell me what you're doing for kids and how you want to connect with people around the kids. And then I have three minutes to do that. The bell rings and you move on. So, we've been doing those, you know, the last time we did them, I talked to a couple of the people that participated. They both said they met three or four people that they are making connections with in an ongoing way. So it's really, how can you connect around kids and building assets by connecting with other people? Yeah, thanks for asking.
Okay, I just.
Bruce.
Frida, not to put you on the spot, but as long as we have you here, uh, I'm interested in why you want to be a Super Champion.
But if you're going to answer, you need to go up to the microphone so everybody can hear your answer.
Well, when you think about a lot of the assets that, um, that is talked about, and then the big piece is about children and students and making sure that they have the support that they need. That was part of the, when we had the conversation about, are you willing to be a part of that? And I said, sure, you know, it's just let me know and I can do whatever I can in order to support the cause. So it's about kids and how we can support them.
Well, I just want you to know that we appreciate your standing up and doing that for the kids.
Thank you.
All right, now are there any more questions? Okay, I just, before you run though, Karen, I think all of the board members are Asset Champions. Almost all, almost all.
I think almost, I'd say well over half are.
All right, anybody who's missing that might actually become an Asset Champion. But I did want to point out Karen is sort of our Super Champion in that, I don't know if you know, Karen Atkinson, the Karen Waters, at each of our meetings where we have communications and transmittals, she has been sharing one of the assets. And I think that's been a nice addition to, to our discussions here.
And perhaps there'll be other people who will model that in the organizations they're involved in, so. Right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on, uh, conveniently to the next topic, or conveniently, our Super Champion, Frida Bailey, is, uh, going to present on, um, her work with the, and the district's work with the American Indian Committee. And there is a resolution that we will be asked to approve and are asked to approve every year, um, later on in this meeting. And it looks like we're getting it pulled up, almost.
I know, I always cross my fingers when I come up here. I'm not too check savvy, so, uh, I'm glad it's working. Good evening, uh, board members, Superintendent Metz, and others. Um, my name is Frida Bailey, and I'm here to share a little bit about our American Indian, uh, education process that we have here in Saint Louis Park. And just kind of talk about the purpose, purpose of why we have the committee. And then some of the things that we've done with our families and students. And recommendations or thoughts that they have about Saint Louis Park. And then what are some things that we feel that we can do in order to support the families? So, uh, based upon Minnesota statute, it requires that, uh, Minnesota school districts with ten or more students that are considered American Indians have an Indian, uh, American Indian Parent Committee. And based upon the numbers that we have, we do fit the criteria. And the committee serves as an advisory to the school district. And so when I meet with the families, I let them know that they are sharing information with me, in which I would share with the district as well. And then the members, it's basically letting them know that they have a voice in what takes place in the school district. So the Parent Committee Resolution for the past three years when we've met, uh, the parent believes that a lot of the information that's being, uh, shared in our curriculum and resources that we have is, um, something that we can enhance to better support the students and the achievement of the students. So they want us to continue to, uh, provide staff awareness. They want us to continue to look at cultural, uh, issues that we have and looking at culturally relevant curriculum that we have in our district. So reflecting on some of the things that we've done in the past, we met with, uh, families in various ways. We've had meetings at our district office. Uh, the first one is usually just kind of get to know each other. We've had meetings where they were at different sites. And at those sites, not only did we talk about the curriculum, but we wanted to, the parents really wanted the students to know that they're, uh, they have others in their building. So it was more of that affinity, having them work together, crafts, having a picnic, providing parents some information about college readiness, about the school system in general. What I've noticed is that we're having it, um, what I would call kind of a transitioning for some of the families. Um, in the past, some of the, uh, the families that we've had that really worked with the school district, some have left, some have gone to reservations, and then we have some that are coming from reservations that are coming to our school district. So we're having a change in some of our members, uh, as far as our American Indian group. So that goes to where are we right now in our enrollment? Um, so I took three years of information from two thousand twelve, thirteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen, fifteen. And I, I tried to put the information into our elementary, middle school, and high school. And we can see that there's a steady decline in, um, our elementary. And what I'm noticing is that those are students that are in our kindergarten first and second grade. That's where our biggest population of students are right now. And then we have what we call some sustainability in our middle schools. Uh, where even though the numbers are small, seven, nine, and thirteen, but we still see there's an increase and they're still here. We see a drop in our high school. And that could be for various reasons. Some were twelfth graders, they graduate. I know that there was a family that left and they had some high school students and they went to a reservation. So our high school numbers, uh, dipped a little bit. But overall, for, from, uh, two thousand twelve, thirteen, we had forty families or students. And then now, we have fifty-five, uh, students in our district from, uh, twelve, fourteen, fifteen. Yes, sir.
How does this, our numbers compare to surrounding districts as far as population?
Well, it depends, because you have some districts, they have what we call American Indian schools. So their numbers would be a little bit higher because they have, um, a place where students can go and actually, uh, learn the language and culture and all of that. So it kind of varies between districts. I don't have the exact number, but I know the heaviest populations are usually Minne- um, Minneapolis and Saint Paul areas.
But for other districts, I do think one percent, which is about what we are, is pretty typical.
So looking at our reading proficiency, and I did add an extra slide in there, so you'll see something a little bit different after this. But I took the information from our, um, when we have our data retreat and, uh, Parachi she looks at, we look at all students in the district and we break that down. A lot of times when we're looking at state assessments, if you have at least twenty or more in a group, you can get that, um, for a site. But because of our district and looking at how many students are actually testing, it's kind of small per, per building. So when you look at this graph, it shows, for instance, um, out of the students that we had, there was one who was exceeding, and this is reading. And when you look at the total number for that, um, that's like a three-point-one percent of the students. And so you have five, and then you have, uh, four for partially met, and then you have three that did not meet. So what I did was I added an extra slide to show it in a different way. Totals for, um, testing, and this is for, uh, MCA proficiency as of the twelve, thirteen school year. So when you look at the number that tested, it was a very small number of students. Uh, and this shows that we had eight percent that showed exceeds. Uh, twenty-three percent did not meet, and that goes back to that three that you saw earlier. And then we have thirty-one that partially met, and then thirty-eight that meets MCA standards. And the same thing applies with our math proficiency. And so when you see that graph that's on the very right, that has the large number says sixty-two percent, and you see that there's twenty students, what that means is that you have, we had twenty students who did not test for various reasons. It could have been, uh, that was a student that was in K one, two, three, I mean, K one, two, or it could have been a high school student because certain grade levels test and some don't. And so that number is a represent, represents those students. That's why it's kind of, it looks really weird there. So what I did was, uh, once again, broke down our math proficiency for our students. And this is information that I'm sharing with the parents as well, so they can see, uh, how the students are doing. And if they have questions for me, we can talk about what are some challenges for the students and what is it that we can do to support them. So partially meets, we have at least fifty percent of the students meets, uh, twenty-five. So when you look at, at least seventy-five percent of the students are partial, are meeting, uh, MCA standards compared to the twenty-five percent that are not in math. When we look at MCA, uh, I'm sorry, math reading percentage of students making typical growth, one of the things we know that typical growth means, that's just the bottom part, it's just that basic year. For some students that are struggling, we need to make sure that they're making more than, uh, that typical growth. So the numbers that you see at the top of the graph shows the percentage of students that are making typical growth as far as our Native American students. Uh, for instance, in grades three through five, we have, uh, what is it, sixty-four percent that were making typical growth. And then grades six through eight, we had sixty. And then, uh, grades nine through ten, uh, ten, it was fifty. So this is something that we're constantly looking at. And we look at, there was some growth when you look at, uh, the, where it started to where we are now. They went from sixty-four, seventy-eight percent, sixty to seventy-five percent. So we see some movement at, as far as students making typical growth. But we know that we have a lot of work to do, uh, in that area as well. And this is in reading. And then the same thing in math, we see some growth, uh, taking place from sixty-four. And we went down one year from twelve, thirteen, um, it was sixty-four, uh, fifty-eight, and then we went back to seventy-eight percent. So, uh, a lot of the building principals, they have that information about those students. And when we have conversations with them, uh, one of the things that, um, part of our district, we have what we call an FKP, that's Frida, uh, Carrie, and Parachi. We usually meet with our, [laughing], a little fun there. Uh, we usually meet with the building principals and their leadership teams. And we talk about students, and we talk about what supports do you have in place? Uh, we ask what type of support do you need from us in order to make sure that students are moving forward? And so, uh, even though a building may have three to four students, uh, in their, in their site that are identified American Indian, we're having conversations about those students as well. To make sure that we're hitting every student when we talk about them. So that goes to where would we like to go and what are our goals? And so when I meet with the families, uh, we talk about some of the things that we would like to see and then ask them if they want to add more to the conversation. So the goal is to ensure equity and student access to, not only to, uh, the curriculum, but being able to participate in it as well. Because we can get to something, but if we're not actually participating in that, uh, that will be, uh, difficult for the students. We want to also make sure that we're providing a robust and effective opportunities for learning, uh, by building relationships. That means knowing the students, who they are, whether you know their, uh, affiliation, uh, understanding that there's some, there could be communication issues for some students if they've been in a building where there was a lot of, uh, language taking place or not taking place. And having high expectations for those students. Uh, building a strong team at your school sites, though, that there's support when you need resources. And, and having students to learn how to advocate for themselves by giving them information about where they are in the process. Part of our teaching and learning, eh, these are some things that are taking place and will continue to take place. And that's exploring ways to intentionally, um, look at the work of American Indians in not only English, math, science, and social studies. I had the privilege of meeting with some of our middle school, uh, American Indian students and some of our high school students. And, uh, a lot of times, we have conversations with the families, but we don't really talk with the students. And so this year, I was being real intentional about working with or meeting with the students just to get their perspective on what do they see, what are their thoughts? And one of the things that, uh, that came up was, a lot of the history behind American Indians take place in social studies and it's kind of brief. And so we're, uh, working with, uh, teaching and learning, just trying to figure out, how can we make sure that it's embedded throughout? You see a lot of it more so in our elementary sites because of the planners, and they can, uh, make sure that they enhance it a little bit more. But it's looking at the middle school, high school, how can we continue to do, do that? So the students can see there's a contingency there. And so, uh, one example is with teaching and learning, uh, with the Minnesota History Center, uh, since middle school is going through that IB process, now there's an opportunity for the embedding of some of that, uh, information, such as the Northern Lights curriculum in, uh, the sixth grade social studies. So, com- uh, conversations are taking place in multiple ways to make sure that we are getting all voices, uh, at the table and listening to what's taking place. And then the next piece is, uh, teachers and leaders have opportunity to attend, um, Best Practices for, uh, Indian Education. We know that WMAP provides, uh, options for teachers to come in and staff members to be able to, uh, receive support and understanding a little bit more about American Indians. And so when we see that information, we try to encourage staff members to participate in that. And then we want to make sure that we're valuing our indigenous people, their perspectives and, and needs as well. So we want to make sure that we're anxious to learn more about how we can better serve our students and families so that they can participate in the work that's taking place. How do we get there? We know where we are, where do we want to go, now how do we get there? And that's to start the year off with the clear and concise expectations for both students and, uh, parents. Just helping them understand what's taking place, expectations, navigations, and then getting feedback from them. That's looking at your staff curriculum and professional development. How is it supporting the staff and, I'm sorry, the students and families? And then providing families with information about college readiness. One of the, uh, conversations that took place with the families when we met was, you have a high school student, they just came from a reservation. Do you know about various locations in the building that you can go to for resources? And so it's just helping them navigate through that. I was able to work with the, um, multicultural liaison, Natalie Hopkins at the middle school, to work with the students. And then, uh, Leann was able to help me, Stevens was able to help me with the, uh, high school students. So just showing them, here's some places where you can go. If you're struggling with it, where can you go and who can you talk to? And helping them become advocates for their work and understanding that, that piece. So we look at scheduled meetings, uh, the parents, uh, we've looked at various ways of communication. Uh, we've looked at emails, we've talked about, um, letters being sent out. And so families are thinking about when they would like to have their next meeting. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, once again, with our building principals, looking at our benchmark assessments. Who are the students, what's the struggle? If there's an attendance issue, how can we support that? And if so, what do you need from us? So there are various questions that are being asked when we're working with, uh, the building principals. And learning every student has an interest and they have a strength. That's what, uh, when I was meeting with the students, to let them know that we all have something that we can bring to the table, and we should be proud of that. Now how do we build on what we bring to the table in order to move forward? So in closing, when educational practices, policies, and curricular resources and school cultures are representative of all students, such that each student has access to participate and make and make progress in high-quality learning experiences regardless of his or her race. And this is the SES, which is the, the educational, secondary educational support. Gender, ability, religion, affiliation, root, origin, linguistic diversity or other characteristics, we are here to support all students and help them understand that they're, we're here to serve them and give them pathways in order to move forward. And helping them to become better advocates for themselves. And because this resolution is a resolution of concurrence, there is no recommendations from the families, so that means that there is no school board action needed because it's just a continuation of what we've been doing in the past.
Okay, so we won't need to act to approve the resolution?
We will not because of its concurrence, correct.
Well, thank you for that thorough report. What questions, Jim?
So Frida, this is, I understand, a statutorily mandated committee?
Correct.
And how many parents are on there?
Well, it varies. Like, for instance, we had six last year, and this year we had two. And it was on that bad weather day. I was glad they came. But we have, in the system, I want to say, because there was some glitches with identification, so I want to say, out of that, with the forty-some students, we have about fourteen, fifteen families.
That...
No, not on the committee, but just in our system that we have. But on the committee, there was two this year.
And in your view, has it, I mean, just getting the parents together and hearing their ideas and their input, has it been effective in your opinion?
It has been. Depends on where we're meeting and time. For instance, last year when we met, more parents participated when we had like a family activity, family gathering, it was more like a picnic. And then when we had the bead ceremony, we had more parents. And it's just getting them, because there's a changeover. It's getting the parents to really understand the, the purpose of the committee, and then how we can serve them. It's, and I think that's part of it, it's just building the relationship, so it's going out there more and giving them the information about it.
And so I guess where I'm going is, and I apologize for my voice. Too much gymnazian time this weekend, basketball.
I thought it was a football game for last night.
Is, is this a model, is it effective? Should we look at trying to engage, you know, other groups, demographic groups in our district? And is there something we can learn from this that might be helpful? Or is this something that, you know, maybe we could improve on it, but it's something that's mandated, we have to do?
Right, right, right. I think I understand what you're saying. And sure, I, I do feel that this is something that we can improve on. One of the things that Carrie and I, we were talking about was talking to some of our neighboring districts, and just to see how many families they have, and maybe looking at some combination activities. So we're trying to think outside of the box. I'm also looking at addresses to see maybe if we go to where the most are located. There are some sites that are heavy, and it could be because there's so much taking place. It's like, for parents, where do I go? Which building do I attend? What meeting do I attend? If there's a separate meeting for this, and then there's a meeting here. So it's more of coordinated effort. So I, I agree, there could be other things that could come about to make sure that we're kind of hitting the masses and not adding some extra. So thinking outside of the box, for sure.
And how about as a tool for, obviously parental engagement? And, I mean, could you see this? Is it worthwhile exploring? Do we try this with other groups, or?
Yeah, I, I do agree. Once again, I've been kind of thinking, how can we, because there are other parent groups that we're missing. And so it's, what do we put out there? And it's basically getting information from them. Because I don't want to create something that I feel they would like to have. I want to get their information as to what they would like to see brought to the table. And so a lot of times, parents, when I talk to them, just kind of one-on-one or out and about, it's, well, it's the same thing, or they don't see anything different. So it's like that, what do I get out of it? And so we have to figure out, what is it that parents feel that they're getting out of it that's very beneficial for them to participate? So those are some things that we are looking at to try to embrace some of the other families as well.
Other questions, Ken?
As I was reading through this, this afternoon, I, it struck me on the respectfully learn about the individual student, and, and how, what their, what their interests and strengths are. That bullet. And I, it, it brought to me, brings me to the, the thought that Bruce and I were talking about earlier, on having individual plans for each individual child, which would follow along with them as they go through the school systems. Are, are, is that what your vision is, is to find out what these children's interests are, and then kind of embrace those interests? Maybe get mentors with them or community leaders to help them formulate those, those thoughts? What was that?
A lot of it is just helping them build an awareness as to their culture and who they are, and become proud of that. So that's the big piece. One of the parents, once again, they just said, well, what is it that, what can we do to make sure that my child doesn't feel like he's the only one in the building? And so that goes back to the affinity group that I was talking about earlier. And then the other piece was, when I met with some of the high school students, they talked about maybe mentoring with some of the other buildings where they have students that are, have a heavy population of American Indian students, and then working with them. So going out to other buildings and kind of working with, so they can see and helping them navigate. And it's, it's about that awareness of who you are, and be proud of who you are. And that's what we're trying to build on with some of the students. The academic component, we did talk about how you can support each other in your group if you know that you're struggling. Who are those members? What are they taking? So it's helping them communicate with each other, being an advocate, understanding the navigation system, especially if you're coming from a reservation, and what's different and what's not. And there were some similarities that some did bring, and then some mentioned, maybe we can try. So I'm giving the students the chance to open their voice, to be able to share what their thinking is.
Any other questions? Then thank you for a thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. The next item is a district construction update. Sandy Saline, our Director of Business Services, will do the presentation along with Paula Apetelsky, and tell us where we are.
Good afternoon. I have with me Paula Aplekowski from WOLD, who's going to help answer and field any questions that you may have. We're going to do a presentation on the Elementary Additions Project update as of today. I'm going to go through quickly what type of things have been completed at this point in time since the last presentation that we provided for you. Aquila Elementary, brick and, brick and roofing work is complete. Windows installation is underway. Concrete slab on grade to be poured this week. Gypsum board wall work is underway. Mechanical and electrical work continues. Peter Hobart, two-story, on the two-story classroom, the roofing work is underway. Exterior brick is complete. On the kindergarten, the brick work is underway. Cafeteria below-grade masonry is complete. At Susan Lindgren, they're still working on the sixty-to-seventy-foot-deep helical pile. It's still underway. And we have been submitted by Rashawn, yes?
For those of us who are uninitiated in helical piles, could you explain that to us?
I'm going to have Paula explain that to you.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, it's fine. On that location of the building, when we moved the addition to that side of the building from, from down below, it turns out that a lot of the soils there are the soils that have kind of crumbled off the hill over time. And so they, they weren't great for building on. So what those are is basically, it's a pile. It's a big, long post essentially that they, they construct underground. So they go about sixty to seventy feet deep to stabilize. They provide enough foundation for the building to sit on.
Is that adding significant cost, or?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of cost that went into doing that when we moved it to that side of the building. But it's all in the bids that you, that you approved before. That was all part of the bid documents.
That was, that was the reason for my question. I, I don't, I don't remember that in the bid, not that I read it that closely, but I didn't realize we had to go down and set down a bedrock, or?
No, it doesn't go down to bedrock. It's, I am no soils engineer or structural engineer, but basically it goes down that far because there's then enough soil pressing against the sides of it that it can bear the load of the building above it. And there's more than one, there's a whole, a whole array of them down there to provide enough solid foundation. And again, that's a typical, before we go out to bid, we always like to do some soil borings, and they showed the problem. So the project was all designed around having that in, and it was all incorporated into the base bid. So in the bid documents, you would have seen a number for that.
So, so that, in theory, would not make the project go longer because it was already expected?
Correct.
And with that, we did receive an updated schedule from Rashawn for the additions. Therefore, the district has requested to have a construction site through, walk through with Rashawn. And we're going to have additional meetings between the superintendent, myself and WOLD with Rashawn, since we aren't, we are concerned with the new schedule, which I will present to you next. Rashawn has submitted the following schedule updates. Once again, from the last update that we had received during the last board meeting that we presented this. Aquila Elementary, they are asking to update it to February 12th. Peter Hobart Elementary, Area A, which is a two-story classroom, they are asking to have it, to push to February 18th, as well as the Area B kindergarten. Area C cafeteria, they are asking to have it pushed to April, or March 17th. And Susan Lindgren Elementary, they are asking it to be pushed to March 30th. This Wednesday, we have it scheduled to meet with Rashawn, and like I said, the superintendent, myself, as well as WOLD, is going to be walking through with the owner of Rashawn to discuss this new construction schedule.
Okay, with that, are there questions from the board?
So I did understand the push on the, the Peter Hobart, where we had to wait for another company come in and do their thing. And then Susan Lindgren had some issues with soil and moving wires. But it seems like all of the schedules were pushed. Is there?
That's correct, and that's our concern at this point. Is, is all of them have been there, and I don't know if, Paula, if you want to weigh in on this, but I, there hasn't been anything that we have identified as a district that's beyond Rashawn asking for this to be extended.
Nancy?
In other words, you don't know why Rashawn is asking for the extension? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'll be frank, they're not getting their work done fast enough. That's why they're asking for the extension. I don't think we honestly know what the problem is in its entirety. There have been some days with weather. There was a day or two where the roofing work couldn't happen because kid, their building was occupied. But those have been pretty small things now. We knew that they had been pushed back, as you mentioned, from the CenturyLink and other things. We had agreements with them, I guess, talked about getting a lot done over Christmas break, and they were not very effective over Christmas break to do that. And so we're all very concerned about it now. We've met with the administration last week, they come up with a game plan on how to compel them to get going faster, and that's what our meeting Wednesday is about.
Have they been actually, a couple of questions, and they're related. Have they been onsite working, do we know? And are they having subcontractor or other contractor issues? Or work slowdown issues with their workers? Do, anything that you are aware of?
They have been onsite. I'd say they've been onsite every day, not that I'm there monitoring it, but it's how much people, how many people they have there, and how much they're actually getting done is really the problem. And I can't speculate beyond that, other than they do seem to often miss dates when certain things were supposed to happen.
Jim?
Could you refresh us on our, some of our remedies? Do we have like a liquidated, liquidated damages provision or anything on the timing?
We, we did not put liquidated damages in the bid. Those can get, be tricky to enforce and often increase the cost of the bids, and so we chose not to do that on this one. You do have what you would call actual damages. So there are ways to have some recourse. That is essentially a legal action that you would take against them to start having some recourse. And we, again, talked about those with the district. If those things become a serious thing, I think we'll have to get some legal advice about doing that. But up until now, we've really been trying to work and open good faith with them to try to move things forward. And I, I suspect that this week, it's going to get a little bit tougher in that room.
Other, Nancy?
I just have one more. Even, just assuming we have Rashad's dates here, where they talk about the Peter Hobart cafeteria on March 17th. Does that mean the cafeteria is ready to be fully used by students the next day?
Yeah, yeah. The definition of substantial completion is that the owner can occupy the building. So that's the, that's the plan. And again, as Sandy pointed out, these are, these are the latest dates they sent us. So we're presenting them to you as a, to give you all the information we have, but it's certainly not something that anybody's happy about, or that you've sort of agreed to let them do at this point.
Any other questions? I guess we'll look forward to the next update and hope you have perhaps better news.
Thank you. We hope to, we hope so too. Thanks.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is also, Sandy, it's the Lenox bid presentation. And subject to that, later on our agenda is an approval of the bid, so.
Yes. We have a project going on at Lenox, where we're going to be redoing the entryway as well as the offices, as well as doing some remodeling to the kitchen to get it upgraded to be usable. And we did receive various bids, which we have in the board packet for the, this project. We are required by state statute to take the low bid. And the low bid, the base bid for the project is $226,400. We did reject a couple of the alternatives for the interior painting, since we feel that there is an option to look at it ourselves. We do have an alternative three, which we accepted for the kitchen upgrades at $39,300 for a total contract award to Brennan Construction for $265,700. We have talked to WOLD, and there is nothing negative that we've heard about Brennan, as well as we've heard some positives from our staff as well. So we do recommend to have this approved during the approval process.
Is there a reason that we need to deal with, for the recommendation to reject the two alternates?
Pardon?
You have two alternate bids for painting that I recommend that we, not, you're, you're not asking us to accept those, is there?
That's correct.
You assume you can get that work done by somebody else for a better price?
That's correct.
Okay. Then, no other questions? Thank you, and we'll have this on our agenda later on. The next item is the reappointment of one of the representatives that we have on the city of St. Louis Park Parks and Recreation Commission. And board members in the couple of papers at your desk, you had George Folks request to be reappointed. He's been serving as our representative on the Park and Recreation Commission, and he's still interested in doing that, in developing the strategies for future recreation facilities, which is a big issue in St. Louis Park now. And so we can, any discussion on that, any, by board members?
Just saying, knowing George and his interest in youth and athletics, and his kids went to parks, he's got grandkids at the park, I'm glad he's still interested in serving. So at the time, I would, at the appropriate time, I would move his appointment, reappointment.
All right, you'll get that chance later. If we do have, or when we have positions that need to be filled with new appointments, then we'll do some, that would have first... that need to be filled with new appointments, then we'll do some, that would have further board discussion and maybe interviews, depending on how many there are. But since this is a reappointment, um, we'll have it on the action agenda. The next item is the school board meeting dates, and, uh, board members, we've, in the past, been approving dates in March or so for the next school year. Uh, and I think we're going to shift this around to do the calendar year, but we technically have already approved, um, the list of dates that are at your, uh, place through June. The dates that we have not approved are through the remainder of the year. Um, and there are a couple, uh, of dates that have conflicts with, um, religious holidays. Um, and one has a legal holiday that we don't have to recognize, but just so you see, or for the audience, it's August 10th. These are still consistent with our second and fourth Mondays. August 10th, and we normally only meet once in August. In September, it's the 14th and the 28th. Um, but the first one conflicts with Rosh Hashanah, so there's a suggestion or that we meet on the 16th. Another option would be to move it to the following Monday, the 21st. Um, September 28th, um, conflicts with Sukkot, so there's a question of whether we should reschedule that. In October, the two dates are the 12th and the 26th. Um, the 12th is Columbus Day, I believe, but, uh, our ace legal researcher, uh, Nancy Gores, noted that the statute does not require us to reschedule for Columbus Day. Anybody wants the copy? I printed it here.
I think as long as you give a notice ahead of time, or something you have to do administratively.
Uh, we would have to determine, um...
And this is the meeting.
And this is the meeting, yeah. And so, we, we can go ahead, um, doing, with the, the meeting on Columbus Day. Uh, November, it's the 9th and the 23rd. In December, we only meet once, uh, and that is, the date would normally fall on the 8th. That is early in Hanukkah, so the question is whether we should move it or not. So, this will be on the action agenda, but now for discussion, thoughts from board members as to whether we should shift, um, any of the dates that, uh, that are proposed. I do think I would recommend that we switch the 14th, um, to either, I guess, I, I guess I'm inclined, Nancy was suggesting the 21st, that we stick with Mondays. That is what we're familiar with, and maybe switch that to the 21st. Um, but to otherwise keep the dates as they are. I'll just put that out there as a idea.
Yeah, I would agree with moving the September 14th to the 21st, and, um, I don't know if December 8th falling on Hanukkah is an issue for anyone, but if it is, um, actually the 7th, I'm more than happy to move it, um, a week to the 14th. Just let us know because we can do that.
Are you saying Monday is the 7th? Because then the meeting date would be the 14th, right? The second Monday?
Yeah.
Julie, I was just looking at that too, and I think that's a typo. The December 2015 meeting is a typo, so we should look at that one again.
Well, let's, let's, if we're looking at calendars, let's go with the 14th as the date.
So...
No, uh, December 2015.
December 14th?
Yeah. But it's a, we normally would meet the second Monday. That's why I'm saying it, the 8th. That may be the last day of Hanukkah then. I'm hearing some discussion down at the end of the, everybody's looking at calendars for those on TV and not finding this to be a very scintillating conversation. We're looking at calendars and, and talking about alternatives. And, uh, so let's go, let's, we're on December, um, the second Monday would be the 14th. Um, we're concerned about the, the conflict with Hanukkah. Can we go with the 14th? Any reason to be changing that one? Cause it's... Is anybody, go back to October. Anybody, uh, want to, uh, switch the Columbus Day holiday? Or we would be declaring that a holiday in the evening. We have school that day. Then let's go back to September. Um, two of us have suggested we move the September 14th date, um, which would be the second, second Monday. It's also the second week of classes. And move it to the 21st, um, to avoid Rosh Hashanah. I'm looking at you, Superintendent Metz. I don't know if there's anything we'd have to get decided earlier in September. Yes, Karen, and just, she was saying if we needed to do something, we could do it on August 31st. Which is before Labor Day. If we needed a special, uh, if something needed to be done, we could call a special meeting for a multitude of dates in there actually, but, yeah. So, so make the September meeting dates 21st and 28th? Okay. There could be individual changes, but we do like to get them set for purposes of ca, the printed calendar and those kinds of things, so. Okay, any other concerns about dates? Okay, then, uh, we can move on to the even more exciting topic of school board compensation. The compensation is set at, um, 3893 a year for board chair, 3225 for vice chair, treasurer, and directors, and then 3607 for the school board clerk. Um, and then we have $55 for special meetings that are not on a day already scheduled for a regular, um, meeting. Those don't happen too often, but occasionally do. Uh, the recommendation is to... Actually, there isn't a formal recommendation here, but that is our current, uh, compensation. This is a... Recommendation is to keep it the same. So, uh, at this point, it's discussion. Um, any comments or questions or thoughts by board members? Karen?
So I just have one question. Why, why would the vice chair be so much less than even the director level position? I, I don't quite get that.
It's, it's the same as the director. Basically, there's an additional sum for the school board clerk and for the board chair. Um, I've wondered that too. The treasurer and the vice chair are not that active, but they do require some additional duties. And, um, the last time I thought about it, I was becoming vice chair, so I didn't think it was appropriate for me to raise it. So, uh, but that, I think that's why. This is, some years, those are not particularly busy, um, roles.
But it, but as...
But they can be.
But I think Karen's right. As it's presented here, the board chair has one sum, the vice chair's sum is lower than the non-office holding directors, so there's either an error here or we need to fix, we need to fix what we're looking at or, you know...
We're reading two different things. That's it, cause I'm looking at the cover sheet.
Yeah, in one spot it says one thing and another spot it says another.
So what's the correct?
Okay, where are you guys reading it? Off the actual agenda? Oh, I think the numbers are wrong there. The vice chair and if, if, the cover sheet, I think is correct, which is the 3225, is the vice chair, treasurer, and non-office holding directors. And then the 3607 is the school board clerk, and that language is missing from the agenda item G.
Thank you for clarifying.
No, I'm hearing...
If you're looking at this, and this, they're saying the same amount, but the counts, I would think are wrong because the vice chair should get the same as under that.
Right, that's what we think the G is wrong, but the cover sheet, um, is where I thi... Yeah, what you're looking at there. What do we want it to be?
Well, my, my intent would be to move that the, that the compensation be the same as we've had it last year, but the assumption is, that is what we're saying, that it's, that everybody's making the same, and that the board chair is making more. And if we're going to raise the others, we probably need to make sure we have accurate data. And I'm not opposed to doing that in terms of the vice chair, but we just don't have the information here.
Linda, you...
Looking at the cover sheet, I, I think it's the way it's worded, and it's 3893 for the board chair, 3225 for the vice chair, treasurer, and directors, and then the clerk gets 3607 because they have more responsibilities. So I think it's in the wording of it.
Right. That's, that's the way I understand it and recall it from the history. If we want to go ahead with it being the same as it is, that's an easy motion. If we want to make some changes, um, we should note to the audience that our normal, um, board, uh, administrative assistant Cindy Bennett is out, and Linda Stanley's been ably figuring, filling in for her. Um, Cindy did a lot of this from her home, and so we're, the access to the information may not be as nimble as, as we normally are, but I, I think Linda read it correctly the way, uh, it is. Um, but again, if we want to make changes, we probably want to postpone it to the next meeting. Jim?
I guess the only comment I have, I think there is, there's value in some monetary compensation. I think we've been pretty good over the years of kind of going with where things have been going and years of massive cuts. We've given ourselves reductions, although all of it is really just symbolic, uh, given the slight impact it would have on our budget. And it seems that, uh, if I recall, we gave a small percentage increase, uh, last time, so I, I would support the recommendation this time.
Of keeping it as it is.
Of just keeping it as, as is, yeah.
See nods. Any other comments? Bruce?
I would support that also. And, uh, the vice chair position, as laudable as it is, is probably compared to the vice president of the United States, which somebody said was the most boring job in the world.
I would actually disagree. There is a stated role, other than breaking ties on a vote. So, uh, in that, uh, the vice chair does put together the superintendent evaluation, which does take some time and effort, having, almost having done it, so. Sometimes having to, uh, razz our fellow colleagues to get their responses in.
And they're both named Joe, so there is that connection too, right now.
And I would support giving it the same.
Anybody else? All right, that'll come up for action later on, um, our agenda, and we are now moving into the action agenda. So the first item is, um, the organization of the board for 2015. It is recommended that the school board approve the resolution appointing the, the school board, uh, responsible authority. Um, that's the one for data practices, I believe. Approve and redesignate the board meeting format. Official newspaper, investment, investment depositories, electric fund transfers, authority to make investments, authority to disperse salaries, authority for early claim payments, authority to purchase, deputy clerk and deputy treasurer, check signatures, appointment of school attorneys, and appointment of school auditors for, um, the St. Louis Park Independent School District Public Schools. Is there a motion?
I would make, I, first I'd make a motion waiving the reading of the resolution and then move to, um, approve all of the items that you just read with the notation that the resolution needs a roll call vote.
So first, we should take the motion to waive the reading of the resolution. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? So all in favor of the motion to waive, uh, the reading of the resolution? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven zero to waive, uh, the reading of the resolution, and then you moved...
Then I would move the resolution because that requires a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, okay.
Cause it's a resolution.
All right, we'll move the resolution appointing the responsible authority. And our new clerk, would you call, uh, the board members' names for, no, wait a minute. Motion? I need a second on that.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, uh, clerk, would you please read the board members, read the roll for, for the vote?
Bruce?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
So the motion carries seven zero. I think, Rob, that means you're a responsible authority. I would now look for a motion to approve the remainder of the board organization items. So moved. Motion by Nancy, second.
Second.
Second by Ken. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the motion carries seven zero. We approve the organization items. Next is to approve the St. Louis Park and Recreation Commission reappointment. It's recommended that the board approve the request for reapproval of the appointment of George Folks, uh, to the St. Louis Park and Recreation Commission for a term that expires, uh, December 30th, 2017.
December 31st.
December 31st of 2017. Thank you.
So moved.
All right, motion by Jim, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, the next item was approval of the American Indian Committee Resolution. We were told earlier that we did not actually need to act on that. Um, so I will not ask for a motion there. Um, we now have the approval of the Lenox Community Center bid award. It's recommended that school board approve the request of the administration recommending the award of the bid for construction, uh, at the Lenox Community Center to Brennan Construction, Minnesota, as presented. Is there a motion? Uh, motion by Ken, second.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion about that, uh, bid? Or the resol, or the, yeah, the bid award? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries again, seven zero. And the last is the approval of the school board comp, compensation for January 2015, um, through the end of the year. It's recommended that the school board approve the school board compensation for January 2015 to January 2016, um, as decided by the board. I think if somebody makes a motion, they need to be clear what they are moving there. To be the same or changed in any way.
I will move whatever the salaries, uh, compensation was for the prior year.
You would move that we continue with the same salary as we had in 2014?
Same compensation as prior year, yes.
Okay. Uh, motion by Jim, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, and I'll repeat it just to be clear, to maintain the same school board compensation in 2015 as, as occurred in 2014. Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries, uh, seven zero. And the last action is the meeting dates. Um, so, we're approving that the meeting dates, uh, through June, January through June have already been approved for the second and fourth, uh, Monday in all cases. Um, we're now approving August 10th, September 21st, September 28th, October 12th, October 26th, November 9th, November 23rd. November 9th, November 23rd, and December 14th, um, and January 11th, 2016, I think we should get the first meeting of the next year, um, approved. Is there a motion, uh, to that end? So moved.
Okay, mm, I think the 16th is a mistake also, when I'm looking at it.
Let's look, what is the second Monday? Is that right?
11th.
Oh, the 11th, no.
Is that correct? That is correct, sorry.
I may have read it, January 11th is the date that's on here, it's January 11th, 2016.
So you were correct.
Well, if I, if I read it correctly, I think it's the thought of 2016 that is kind of, um, I'm still not used to 15. So we had a motion from Nancy, we need a second? I didn't, I don't think I heard one. You're, Ken is seconding it. All right, is everybody clear, is there any further discussion on the meeting dates?
So the only change is, is the 14th to the 21st.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, the December 14th is a change to what's written here, it is not changed to the pattern of second and fourth Mondays. All right, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor of the motion, please say aye? Aye? Anybody opposed? Motion carries, um, and Linda, we can confirm, we've got the dates right here. All right, communications and transmittals, does anybody have something to share? I see Karen does.
Not children first this time, but really great article in the brand new edition of St. Louis Park Magazine about our equity coaches, um, and the project that's going on throughout our district, and our teachers are using Q Comp dollars to add equity coaches to their training and support, and, um, what is exciting about this, the teachers are learning from each other strategies for closing the gap, especially in areas of reading and math, so, I commend our teachers for participating in this, and I really wanna, um, say thank you to our equity coaches who are making the effort, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Joe?
A couple of things, uh, and Rob can chime in on the, on the first one, um, we asked for a sizable grant from the Hennepin, uh, from Hennepin County to do some improvements to our stadium, and we're awarded around $120,000, so we're very thankful for that effort. We have, um, we have a laundry list of things that we wanna, wanna do, and we have to kind of figure out what items can fit within that $120,000, but we're very appreciative of the county for, um, for, uh, giving us that money, and, uh, yeah, I look forward to the stadium being, um, better in the years to come, first with the turf, and now with some, some much-needed improvements. Uh, the second thing, and I'll try not to take too long on this, so I was reading my kids this book, Olivia and the Fairy Princesses, and it, uh, my daughter, who's four, likes it, but my son was listening to it, too, and, uh, I won't spoil the ending, but, and part of it, part of it talks about all these things that Olivia could, could be, and one of the things that they say is, "Or I could be a reporter and expose corporate malfeasance." And, um, I had, I had one, uh, parenthood fail, or, actually, this happened twice, where I tried to explain war to my, uh, uh, kindergartner, uh, that didn't go very well, I didn't explain it very well. Corporate malfeasance went equally well, um, but, as I was explaining what corporate malfeasance, uh, was to my, uh, five and four-year-old, my five-year-old, who's a kindergartner at Susan Lindgren, said, "Oh, you know, it, you know, if you don't, if you wanna expose corporate malfeasance, you're being, you're being principled." And I was so glad to hear that term, that IB term, um, has permeated that, um, that young in our, in our, um, in our system, so, um, I'm very, I was very glad, glad to hear that, and, uh, don't ask my kids what corporate malfeasance is, but, but ask them what principled is, because I, um, cause you'll hear that.
I think they got the idea, that's great. Bruce, did you have one?
Uh, I am holding in my hand, if the camera can get it, uh, this is called Build On the Momentum, and it's the 2015 Legislative Platform for AMSD, and I have passed that out to the board and to our staff who's, who are present, uh, I was stopped before the meeting, and, uh, Carrie reminded me that every time I speak on this, I say, "More funding, more funding." Uh, the, the, if anyone is interested out there in television land, I'm happy to share this with you, it's about funding, and the fact is, our special education cross-subsidy, which is additional money that it costs us for, uh, kids who are being educated within the district who have special needs, uh, it does cost us more money, and if the state would just fund their portion, it would make up for two to three million dollars in our budget, uh, here in the district. So, funding is very important, and increasing the formula is number one on the agenda. The second is facilities, giving us more flexibility, our buildings in this district average age is 60-plus years, and therefore, we need additional flexibility in how we fund these additions to our building, and what funds we can use for that. Uh, the other is local control and mandates, and that goes back to things where, instead of going out for referenda that are simply re-upping a referenda that always passes, instead of doing that, allowing the school board to do that, and several other pieces. But the last point is the world's best workforce, and I'm not sure if everybody saw this in the paper on Saturday, but, uh, there were three superintendents, uh, our director of AMSD, and I went down and talked to the Star and Tribune, and there was an editorial in the paper on Saturday, and the fourth point here is about the world's best workforce, and how AMSD supports that, and the strip came out totally in support of what we were attempting to do there. So, these are important things, uh, funding is an issue that we have pushed in this district, uh, in, there are a number of us who have been on the board for more than 10 years, and when we were first on the board, uh, the, our, our reserves or our fund balances were negative. Today, they're quite healthy, and that's a good thing, and to keep pushing for that, but if you look at where we are against inflation, we are, just made it back to about 2003 with all the cuts we've made, so rather than, I could talk about this all night, but I won't, I'll stop now, uh, but I just think this is really important, and again, it's called, "Keep the momentum going, uh, build on that momentum," and we wanna make sure that we do that, and obviously, we, we support that on this board, and, but your support to the legislature, talk to your legislators, uh, we have a new one in Cheryl, Cheryl attended our, our session, and, uh, and, uh, as, as did Ryan, and, uh, they're really good people, and they're supporting what we're doing in education, and we need you to contact your legislators out there. Thank you.
Any other announcements, communications and transmittals, to be precise? Okay, if there are none others, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Bruce, second.
Second.
Second by Joe, uh, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, uh, motion carries seven zero, and we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.